Please meet today's meats, Lord. Father, show us how to listen with open and humble hearts and especially be respectful to people different from us. Father, forgive us for the times we failed to treat each other as your creation. We ask all of this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, and representative of our citizens.
In my own Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, and to the principle of Okay, first thing, we have proclamation. And would you like to read it for us? And please do. Please introduce yourself to the council.
My name is Bobby Joe. I'm what formerly was Quadling Valley Family Violent Shelter. We are now called Thriving Hearts Crisis Center. Uh, we are located, main office in Seguin, and we have a satellite in Florisville as well. So I'm gonna read the Sexual Assault Awareness Prevention Month proclamation. Whereas every sixty-eight seconds, another person in the United States is sexually assaulted, and in Texas, two in five women and one in five men are victims of sexual assault. And in fiscal year 2023, Thriving Hearts Crisis Center rendered 1,410 survivors services to 452 survivors of sexual violence and provided 124 hospital accompaniments for sexual assault exams. Whereas according to a study conducted by the Texas Association Against Sexual Assault and the University of Texas at Austin Institute on Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault, approximately 6.3 million Texans have been sexually victimized. Whereas most victims are sexually assaulted by someone they know, ninety-one percent of victims did not report to police. Whereas it is appropriate to salute the more than twenty million victims who have survived sexual assault in the United States and the efforts of victims, volunteers, professionals who combat sexual assault. Whereas national and community organizations and private sector supporters should be recognized and applauded for their work in promoting awareness about sexual assault. Whereas police forensic workers and prosecutors should be recognized and commended for their hard work and innovative strategies to increase the percentage of sexual assault cases that resolve in the prosecution and incarceration of the offenders. Whereas sexual violence is a persistent and pervasive problem in our society, one that requires attention year-round, and in order to foster healthy communities, all citizens must support the effort to end sexual violence every month of the year. And whereas national and community organizations, businesses, and the private sector and the media are urged through national sexual assault awareness of sexual violence and strategies to decrease the incidence of sexual assault. Therefore, I, Crystal Apple, Mayor of the City of both, do hereby proclaim the month of April as National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month, and both, and urge all citizens to deserve this month by supporting the goals and ideas of victims and those working toward awareness and prevention, and by participating in community efforts. Today is the fifteenth day of April, 2024.
Do you want this?
Yes, please.
Thank you for coming. I hope everything's alright.
Me too. We're on week two of it. So we're trying to see what's going on. But thank you. Thank y'all.
Okay, consent agenda items. I didn't find anything wrong. If y'all, I mean, I may have missed it, but it looks right to me. All in favor?
See if they need. Yeah. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the consented items. There. I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Review and discussion and possible action to Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts and Court Audit. So, all a note, we never had that before. We got audited, um, the court was audited, and it was found that the court had not sent the right amount of money to, uh, the state. And so this is from, uh, you see the court fees from January of oh four to December of nineteen, and then September of ninety-one to December of three, and January of twenty of all. So they didn't look at everything, but they picked different things that they weren't really at. And we are shy, ten thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and three cents. So we have to pay that to the state. They came in, they, we had a visit with them, and, um, the court clerk had done a lot of looking at because they first came and looked for things, did nothing, and then she had to spend a lot of time looking for more information. Maybe something was missed on the initial, and sadly, there were lots of mistakes made. This is the previous, um, objection. I think there was a few little things that y'all had that, um, was the most of these previous years.
Can I go?
I guess as far as they want.
Right, and you gave some, January of oh four, you went all the way back to 2004?
That's what it says on here.
Okay, 'cause I didn't get a copy of the final report. I know I had requested one, but I didn't get it.
Okay, well, you can certainly have.
Initially, he said he could only go back four years, and so perhaps there's been some new legislation that he was able to go back even further. But the original amount was ten thousand and something, and I didn't write down the number, and you just gave.
Ten thousand, four hundred and sixty-two oh three, and I think that's what he told us the day that we met. Um, he, I mean, there, you can see the dates on there. Y'all can follow through on that, but, um.
Oh, it's very important.
Yeah. So that's where most of the mistakes remain is, um, and Judge, you might would say or explain the part about if you don't get any money, you don't owe the state any money, but if we do find somebody, we have to give the state their judgment on.
Correct, and, and that sounds like double talk. It sounds like double speak. And so I had my clerk print something out for me today, and I didn't make a copy for everyone, but I'll just give you a sort of an example of something that happened recently. And I will not give you the defendant's name, uh, but I will say this is a true defendant. And I don't know how many of you guys, and please don't raise your hand. I've gotten a speeding ticket or anything recently, uh, but if you, and that's our number one offense, is speeding citations. Those are number one offense. And so when someone comes in and they say, oh, I got a ticket, and what can I do to get it dismissed? Well, you have options. You can, if you have not taken driver safety courses in the last twelve months to dismiss a citation, then you can do that. Or if you have already taken driver safety courses, this person did, then you don't have any other option except just to pay your court costs, pay your fines, and if you would like to request a deferral, which means that you go thirty-six or ninety days without incurring another offense, then I turn that over to our prosecutor, because the prosecutor has access to databases that I don't have access to. And so if someone requests a deferral, but then we find out they've done this time and time and time and time again, the prosecutor will say, Judge, I really don't think this one needs a deferral. I think they just need to pay the full amount and just move on. And if they don't have a big long list, then they will pay fifty-dollar deferral fee plus the full amount, and then have to go through their probation period and then get dismissed. So this young person right here came in with a speeding ticket, and she said, oh, can I just take driver safety course? Sure you can. Well, she only paid a hundred and forty-four dollars total, right? A hundred and forty-four dollars total. And she took the driver safety course, brought her receipt, and then her case was dismissed because she completed the course. Well, lo and behold, a few weeks later, she comes and gets another speeding ticket, or actually, this was a ringing a stop sign. She could have taken driver safety course, but she couldn't. So instead of paying one forty-four and taking the class, she had to pay the full amount of two hundred and fifty-five dollars. That two hundred and fifty-five dollars includes a hundred and twenty dollars that goes to the state, fourteen dollars that stays with the city, and then the fine of a hundred and twenty-one dollars, okay? So the city got a hundred and twenty-one dollars, the state got a hundred and twenty dollars, and then out of the court costs, state gets a hundred and twenty, we get only fourteen out of every time there's a court cost. And once she paid the first time, the, just the one forty-four, that was zero amount of a fine. A hundred and twenty dollars still went to the state, and we still only got fourteen dollars of that court cost, okay? So the only time quote-unquote revenue comes in to this court that is not those specific fourteen dollars or that one hundred and twenty dollars, then the court doesn't have any revenue because they're getting it dismissed, right? And ultimately, we want people to be safer drivers. Ultimately, we want the roads to be safer. So of the court costs of, um, one, one forty, one twenty goes to, um, the state, fourteen stays with us. And what was happening whenever the previous judge was here, instead of complying with and just going with exactly as is written on the book, which is what we do, she would say something like, oh, I'm just gonna charge you fifty dollars. Fifty dollars doesn't even cover the state's cost. And so she wouldn't even give anything to the state, but would take the, the fourteen dollars for here and then apply the other monies towards another account, and we still cannot really figure out how she did all that. So that's why it's been inconsistent, and that's why it's been non-important, and why insisted that there be a court clerk, not just a data entry clerk. And because there's no court clerk for us to go back and ask, it's really difficult to recreate that and figure out exactly what happened.
So by one, we've got, we're paying the state ten thousand dollars for the three cents.
So this is money we may have not even collected? It's just money that we should have sent it to?
Should have sent it. Probably was not collected.
We don't have any evidence that it was collected. She accepted cash much of the time. I said, whenever, I think my third or fourth month, it was so chaotic, I said, we're not taking cash anymore. I only accept money orders, cashier's check, or they can pay online. And that's really difficult to follow. Cash is very difficult. So we don't know what all happened, and she didn't keep good receipt records and didn't offer privacy, so we don't know how all of that happened.
And they did offer us an opportunity to disagree and go through some more talking, but it was so obvious that these were actual mistakes. Having gone, I mean, she, they, he showed us everything that they, there was very little to argue about. It's just a sad fact, and praise the Lord, we are in good shape right now.
This must not be a number.
It could have been a much bigger number.
And, you know, in a heartbeat, we're gonna see probably what it was.
And the sad fact is that Mr. Juan Delvez, who was the comptroller who did the audit, said that actually you would double that number because it's another ten thousand that the city didn't receive but should have received and kept. And so it's almost, he, he used the phrase double whammy, that we're out of pocket now ten thousand, but there's really ten more thousand that should have been in the account but never was because of the court counting methods.
So anyway, I guess I need a motion to, uh, just to take action on it, on this on the council, but a motion to pay the fine.
I'm gonna motion we pay it.
A second. All in favor? Thank you. I just wanted to, on, in minutes. Thank you, thank you. Um, discussion of possible action, paving, striping, parking, paving and striping the park of the city park. So this year, you know, as every year, we have the, um, Seal Code going on every summer we're supposed to. And so we're thinking, because of all the parking magnum at the park, that even though in my perfect mind, I would, no, my mind's not perfect, but the perfect idea in my mind would be to make that all pedestrian, it's just impossible. There's just too many people going in, it's impossible. From the softball field to the little league and T-ball field. So while they're here, I would like, I know y'all are gonna do some stuff too, but I would, since we're already employing them, we could go ahead and get that added to our deal. Y'all still do the fence, y'all still do other things that we have in mind, but if we could get that, to get that parking lot, right now, it's got some gravel in it, it's got some base in it, it's got some grass in it, it, we just need probably a whole workover and a paving. But that's what I'd really like, and then after that, get a bus strike, um, both of those fields, because, but, just so you know.
That last weekend, they were all parking.
Oh, it's everywhere. But I did talk to the AD, Jeff Luna, and of course, their season's over. So that's, it's too late for a lot of that, but, um, I did mention him about moving the buses, and sure enough, last Thursday, he moved the bus, so that was helpful. You know, any three spaces is useful. Um, and then, um, but that's what I would like to, if we could see about adding that to our Seal Code project, if y'all would be open to that. This would be the paving, the striping, and the parking lot of City Park, like what we're talking about right now.
And the blue?
And the blue, the blue will be what is gonna be done, that's the plan.
That's what was planned, right?
Right.
And did that, did that include striping also, or?
On where?
On the streets and stuff here?
No.
No, that was just.
We don't usually do.
Yeah, so that's right, right, you did do that. So this, the striping of the parking lot.
Parking lot over there. That, right now, that's what I'm talking about, is parking and paving and striping. I'm just telling you, then we're gonna talk about Seal Code thing next, they're gonna be here, so it would be a good time to get it all back.
While they're all here.
While they're all here. So looking for a motion and go for that.
The motion would be to, like, equate and, or?
Right, well, to move towards the whole lot of.
Okay.
One more second on the motion.
And you want us to pass?
All in favor? All in favor?
Who made the presentation?
Did you?
He made the motion, I second it.
Okay. Okay, then the next item is the 2024 Seal Code Project, and yes, that is in the blue. And right here, if you see, here's the city park, and that's the, that's the one that's there right now, and so it will be just kind of to the, okay, last couple, y'all all know that, just to show. Yeah, the blue part is what we want to do, and Dean is already working on the gravel numbers, the oil numbers.
Quantities.
Quantities.
Types and everything.
And so hopefully, like, by maybe next Monday, we'll have a list of that, right? Possibly?
As soon as I verify everything.
Other size. Right, right. But he's trying to come with.
Is that square at the bottom south, is that around the?
That's where the trucks are.
That's where the trucks are.
Just put base on it this year.
Okay.
But we could probably gravel it, we probably need to gravel it, because Reggie, didn't you say that, that the base is holding up well now? The guy that did that is doing a good job?
Yeah, I think he went back and rolled it, and it started to hold up. He got back and called me, Dan, asked me if I, I mean, just a few little touch-ups he needs to go up, going to hold off, in case something else popped up, he's gonna, he's coming back.
And again, thankfully, we have some extra rock, so it would just be maybe extra oil that we're gonna have to order.
It's like that one over there at the park, it's gonna go all the way from the walking trail all the way back to the, to the fence and thing.
Yes. Yes. Go ahead.
Um, while we're doing this, what about, can we talk about, you know, where all the light poles were laid and stuff, maybe just, there needs to be an overflow.
Yes, and so when Reggie and I had gone out there and looked at it, so you know, connects to the hardball field, it's high, and then it comes down like that. So let's leave the high part still green, and then if we could, it's gonna have to still have the slope because that's drainage, but if we could put some base down there too, I mean, we just need to get numbers. But yeah, the overflow is so necessary.
Because then it goes into the streets.
It does.
Neighborhood.
And we've been talking about that too, is there no parking, they're not even supposed to park on that street, and.
And you see people, you know, pull up, when I was driving out, I was like, pull up, just park right next to the no parking sign.
Oh, they saw the sign?
Yeah. It's harder than this, because.
I know, but there's only three signs, so it's not like, if you, if you're not paying attention and you get halfway down the street, you're not gonna know there's no parking. So we've been talking about putting some parking on the curb so that it's seen, we talked with Brandon today, he's a firefighter, and he said, yeah, red is for fire lanes, but basically that is the fire lane. So we might use red and then, uh, stencil, no parking, and then maybe we do need to add some, uh, signs, I don't know. There's only three, in that whole street, there's only three.
The curb, it seems, sounds pretty good.
Pardon me?
Having the red curb, you're like.
Yeah, that would probably be very effective.
The, um, the last traffic we had, the little, rather, it goes into the football field there, and we, people are parking in wherever it is.
That would all.
That was pretty bad, again, I don't know. There's like a hole, but not a sign.
Yeah, so signs haven't been formed yet.
Okay, where is that?
At the intersection. The one that we passed that, and then the other, a few months ago.
Okay. Oh, yes, right, and I talked to her about that, and she said, I, I think that, she didn't wanna be a trouble, she really didn't wanna be a trouble. Um, she said, but when you're driving into my yard, it's, it gets to be a trouble. But, um, I think.
The littering is low.
It is. Basically.
Right.
Um, but the idea, she said, chief, just so you might want to know this, the kids coming out of that athletic field, they drag race down that street.
We've, we've caught a couple of them, and I've talked to Coach Luna.
Okay.
And he's talked to them a few times, but again, they continue to do it, so we.
So that's something that, I think the idea that we talked about, about closing that gate before the game starts, so that that's not a convenient way to park and walk in, is a thing we need to consider, and then open it as soon as the game begins, maybe.
Yes.
Okay, we need to work towards that. Yeah, she said they're drag racing, which is scary because there's children.
Yeah, and you got a lot of kids in the back of pickup trucks when they come from the school, and we've stopped a lot, and they just continue, so, yes.
Yeah, that's, thank you for bringing that up, sorry.
I have horses crossing my yard, that's a difference. It's crazy, you know, I look at my kitchen window, there's a horse staring at me.
Fertilizers.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, okay, so I need a motion to depart with the Seal Code Project, it's already kind of.
I'll make a motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. So maybe we have the letter of engagement for the annual audit with Lial and Carter, and I don't know, I've looked over it and just wanted to see what it was gonna cost, and it's gonna be twenty-three and twenty-six thousand for each year. This is for twenty-three and twenty-four.
He said it's the same as much.
Okay. And then there's, you know, in case there's other things.
That's a lot of dimstex trying to be this man.
Yes.
But they did a good job.
Passed.
Yeah, well, okay.
Yeah. So I need a motion to, um, enter, to engage with the Lial Carter.
Motion to enter into engagement with Lial Carter, he sees her.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay. So we're to, um, well, let's do the reports first. We've got our tax report, and we're in good shape. I don't know what you're saying, how does that happen?
Because that's a higher.
Yeah, that's great. And what?
Well, the twenty-one is still low, but.
Yeah.
People are paying more.
That's right. And so that, that portion was a huge, that's, we were halfway there, we're halfway through our fiscal year, so. And then we have the police report.
Good evening, America Council. For the month of March 2024, we had forty-five calls for service, and all were going on our spillment system. Traffic enforcement, we conducted a hundred and seventeen traffic stops, seventy-seven petitions were issued, and eighty-eight were verbal or written in writing. Non-traffic enforcements were two, one broken container, one possession, both are from NDA. City ordinance, we had two violations, and there were warnings, one dog at large and one junk vehicle, which they took care of. So we sent a total of seventy-nine cases to the court for their review. Down at the bottom, two city words, like I said, one dog running large and one junk vehicle. The second page, there were the incidents of arrests, so we've had a total of five out of the forty-five calls, we had resisting arrests, possession, warrant services, and public intoxication. You got on the second page. Any questions?
We don't have a copy of it. We don't have a copy of it.
Can bossa roo?
I appreciate it.
No, that's, it's.
I appreciate.
It's, it's not that many numbers. Okay, you said it's about average.
Uh, so tomorrow, and I talked to the mayor, tomorrow, we have our presentation in ACOG for our in-car video cam, dash cams, so myself and Lieutenant Lord are gonna be heading over there at nine-thirty, and he's gonna do the presentation. We've got a total of four grants already that I think we've got approved from, so that's great for us financially. So hopefully, everything goes well tomorrow, nine-thirty, and, uh, we'll find out in about a month after that if we, we got it figured out, so.
Pretty excited for that.
Yeah, any questions? Thank you, very much. Um, municipal court report.
I believe you all got those, I did them the rose last week. What I'm giving you now is, um, a publication by the Texas Municipal Education Center. It's called The Brief, it's generally two pages, but I just consolidated, y'all can read the small print. And it explains more about the consolidated fees, which is a little bit, uh, we touched on earlier when we're talking about how the state gets their part and how, what part we keep. And if you look, uh, number one, that's a nice narrative, but says, that last paragraph above number one says, "The LCF is a fourteen-dollar court cost collection on all non-jail warranters in either offenses, including criminal violations of a municipal ordinance. The municipal traverse are required by law to allocate the fourteen dollars to four separate funds or accounts based on percentages outlined below. It is important to emphasize that the money in the fund or account only be used for the purposes provided by law." And that was one of the things that, um, the auditor talked to us about, and I know, Mayor, we talked about it, we had a meeting with, uh, Rose Wezar as well, and how they were saying there are six different accounts, and for larger municipalities, that may be so, but for our municipality, there are only four accounts, and I've asked Rose to explain how that works. And basically, I think, Rose, tell me if I'm wrong, but all the money that is submitted to you each deposit period, you take and put into the general fund, is that true? Yes? So what they're saying is that in the future, they would prefer that these monies have designated lines, and that those monies be put in immediately instead of putting the general fund and then later pulled back out. That's what the state legislature is requesting.
So we need four separate accounts?
Four separate lines.
Lines.
And so right now, if you look at the budget, um, under our municipal court, um, you have our. Municipal court, payroll, payroll tax, unemployment, contract labor, phone ops, supplies, postage, judge training, fine tax, you need four more lines right there, so that in the monthly report, should we be audited, just the court, again, they could walk in and say, oh, there it is, right? So not waiting until, they're using the general fund and pulling it out once a month, but if it could be a specific line item, and that.
Like under fine tax. Because right now, it's, it has court tech building, which, so that's kind of where that is.
That's one of the four. Yeah, that's one of the four, but all four should be listed.
Okay.
And right now, so number one is municipal building security fund, number two is local youth diversion fund, and we don't call it that in our Tyler Technologies in Code Nine, we call it, and I go to the side, local truancy prevention fund. However, this new thing I told you all about in January, that's going into effect January twenty-five, is called, uh, the Juvenile Diversion and Intervention Act, which is House Bill thirty-one eighty-six. Specifically, we have to call Tyler Technologies and say, please let us change the name of this line to juvenile diversion and intervention. And what's really exciting is we just checked on that account today, and it's got over two thousand dollars in it, which is excellent, because depending on how. which is excellent, because depending on how we decide to handle that, um, we have money in the account. So that's hopefully not anything that the city council is gonna have to pull out or give extra money for. There's already over two thousand dollars in there, from, and we did the timeline from June of twenty-two to present. So we should be good with that, but that's something that we'll definitely include. And another good reason to have it, those four lines, on this budget that is put out every single month. The next one is municipal court technology fund, uh, criminal procedures, that should be another one. The last one, municipal jury fund section, it says, "Money allocated to the municipal jury fund may, not shall, but may, be used by municipality only to fund juror reimbursement, and otherwise, otherwise, your finance jury services, like your postage service." In nineteen years, there were no judge or jury trials, right? So there were no, not much being put out. We, in two years, we have one jury trial request that has been submitted to us, to me, in two years. So it says that the city council gets to decide, the municipal jury fund provides funding mechanism for cities who want to provide reimbursement in an amount determined by the city. So the city council gets to decide whether or not y'all want to. And that is ten cents out of every, uh, court cost that comes in. So the balance in that account right now is pretty small. But our jury is only six people, so it's, I think, five dollars if y'all want to allow for that. If you want to say, hey, we just expect you to come and serve as a juror, and thank you for your participation. So that's sort of an optional one, but it's only ten cents, and so I would leave it in there just to let people know that you have that option for a jury trial. If you want your five dollars, you can have your five dollars.
Okay, but the other four, or the other three accounts, the only one that has money in it is the juvenile diversion one?
Oh, they all have money, but not a whole lot. The, um, and, and it's because we pay it out, and it's used on a regular basis. And remember how we said, um, that there were certain things that could be paid for, that, um, our Tyler Technology, which is like two thousand seven hundred a year?
Right.
That gets drained every year because of the court technology fund, that two thousand seven hundred is being paid out. And right now, there's only a hundred and seventy-four dollars in there. And so that gets replenished on a monthly basis, but it gets paid out as well.
But that gets paid out once a year, right?
It should be paid out once a year, there's other things that it can be used to pay for as well.
The city's been paying that, not the court, the last two years because there was no money in there.
Right, and this one, seventy-four thirty-two, is June twenty-third, twenty-two to present. So we need to look at that, and that's another reason to constantly have it here so we can keep an eye on it. Because I don't know where all that summing is going because Rose handles that whole account. I don't oversee that, I don't have any access to it, I just turn in paperwork, and I have no oversight over that. And right now, the municipal court building security is four ninety, is collected out of every time we get court costs. That currently has a hundred and thirty dollars and forty-five cents. And the state jury fee has a hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-three cents since June of twenty-twenty-two. And that local truancy prevention fund, which will be renamed the Juvenile Diversion Fund, has almost three thousand, it has two thousand eight-six-eight twenty-nine-nine. So that should be enough for what we're anticipating coming up.
Is, are those numbers that you're taking?
No, they were just printed today, but you, you don't have those numbers. This is a report that Rose receives every month.
Oh.
Okay, let me send it to her.
But on the truancy, you know, I've never seen those figures before.
I'm sorry.
She hadn't seen those figures before. Are, are you talking about the one that you turned, and like, like, no, not that one. Yeah, this thing? That's what you're talking about?
And right here, it shows the payments, I mean, it shows the, the time, June.
So this three thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars? Total of that, and that is?
Should be.
So, uh- Well, the court tech building fund, that's where it's always been.
Right, so she's, is it just the four?
Three thousand six hundred and four fifty.
So she's kind of just squishing them all together, I think. That's why they want us to do it separately.
So the actual for this year is five thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars, maybe? It's come into the, it's not, well, that's what it's all yours.
That's what we count. See, when she does the deposit, she doesn't give any of that information, she just writes down court costs. And for me to be able to designate each account, when she does her deposit, it needs to be broken down for it, and she's not doing that.
I thought she was already doing that.
She's not. Okay, well, enough. So there's no way of being able to verify what you're saying and what I'm gonna give, I've been depositing.
So you don't get that form every month with the deposit?
No, not just with the transfer, but it's cordial, she does that cordially for the building and tech, uh, technology fund.
Right.
That's all I see. But it's, which is talking about all those that I'm-
So those, those things-
They're casting the, you need that information.
It has to be done on each deposit.
Right, and I thought she was, I thought we were doing that.
Yeah, I get it, definitely.
Okay, we'll get to it again. All right, yes, definitely.
Okay. All right, anything else on your-
Do y'all have any questions about the monthly report? What I handed you is just an article that, um, a mentor judge of mine has been sharing with different people. It's just an informational article. I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, there was a, um, movie called All the Police Forces, which I have a small town in Illinois, uh, Ronald Reagan's hometown. And I just thought it was a very interesting article, a very good article, and I decided to share it with y'all.
Thank you. Got any questions, Chief? Um, okay, waterworks report, noises still isn't giving us anything, Reggie? Rose?
Yeah.
Okay, I've got some issues with noises, so we're gonna be some talking. I went after the sewer plant today, and they are not hauling off the sludge, which they're supposed to, so that's not being done. And we've talked about getting the-
Generator.
The generator replaced out there, and also, Dean, what can we do with that piece of equipment that we bought to take out all the paper goods, and, uh, we were gonna retrofit it somehow? Do we need?
And we had a contractor that said he could do it, and-
He didn't.
He, he didn't, and I guess it didn't get pushed.
Okay.
And that's capable of doing it very much so, I know he's very busy.
So we could try to get with that guy again?
I'll try to get him to do it, and Reggie will do it.
Okay, that's, I mean, we spent a lot of money on that thing, and it would help with that cleanliness part.
The whole process.
The whole process, because that's quite a mess. The EDC had a wonderful meeting, I'm just gonna give some reports here, if you want to talk about that, what are, what are y'all gonna do?
Um, so we haven't met since, we met in the part, but our last meeting, we went out of the park and kind of walked around to see what we can do to prevent, um, traffic from going on to the walking trail, because they've been driving that half since- T-ball has started, and, um, the baseball games over there, uh, so we're going to be putting, uh, sign inside, or no motor vehicle, um, including any of the ATDs or whatever vehicles, but they are. So we're going to try to get that fence off, um, but also to deter blockers and strollers and such from the path as well. So that's what we're, kind of what we discussed, and then we're redirecting the water flow, we're looking at ways to redirect the water flow away from that.
Right there by, how's your spot?
Yeah, that water runs down off of that, that fence line, and it's generally washing out, I guess, onto the hills and all that solid, but then it's getting dissoed.
When's the next planning and development meeting?
It's only when we have something that needs that meeting.
Okay. I just had somebody ask me how, like, how.
We have something that they need to address, but, um, I don't think we have anything on that right now. Do we, any plan, EDC coming to plan his own?
No, the council always, uh, matters for the whole.
Um, also, y'all talked about a fence to, to give the children a say?
Oh, yeah, along, um, McCall Street, the kids run from that one. I don't know, is it T-ball, or is it just little?
Softball. Softball.
Little league, little league.
Yeah, so that one that's closest to the road, gets jet out in between the cars after foul balls and stuff, and if there's any traffic on that road, which is also another reason we hate people not to park there.
Right.
Um, but maybe if we put a fence along that walking trail, just from where the bleachers are down to where the parking lot is, that would prevent kids from jetting out in between cars.
And we also kind of encourage people to not park there, because they might have to walk all the way around the fence.
Up there, so.
I thought that was very smart. Um, and I, just so you know, while I told you, I did speak with Jeff, and, and, of course, there's things out for that. He was, he, he wanted to cooperate, he was like, yeah, I, I, I can see what it's doing to the walking trail, and, and like I said, we need the best. So he was already listening, so I'm gonna shoot that.
We do have some things for the work in the backside of the baseball field where that shed is, a lot of traffic, and the kids will park along there and walk up for practice over there, so we're trying to deter that from happening as well without interfering with coaches. So we have a few things in the works, but not really pinwitted, I'm pretty happy that works.
Well, that's, Jeff and I talked about that too, that he realized there were still even parents parking out there, and so that would be something with the coaches, we tell the kids to tell the parents, just like, um, the chief suggested, I contacted Casey, just asked her to relate to, coaches to relate to the parents that you shouldn't be parking in some areas.
Right.
So, again, communication, that was a good suggestion from the chief. Anybody else have some reports, or any, oh, we need to work on workshop days. We have, I don't know-
What's the status of the website stuff that you're working on?
Um, I haven't missed the last meeting, so we're on vacation. Well, I've had the most recent one, but it was all at the park, so we didn't discuss anything other than-
Or the park.
Or, but, um, I can follow up.
Okay, because I think a couple meetings ago, you guys were gonna give us like a link, so we could take, you know, take it and get it, or whatever, and I think we forgot that.
I will get, I have the links, um, for the sales, and those two.
Okay, great. Um, so I don't know if y'all looked at our account balance page. We've got the requalities and our sales that's still sitting there. We have the long-term projects, short-term projects, and like I told you, we'll expect that we're gonna be receiving a grant next year. So I think our workshop, we really need to talk seriously about, um, the emergency facility, the, what do we need to do at City Hall, do we need to try to put the chambers back here, you know, what do we need to do? So I think our workshops this summer are gonna be important to figure out how, I mean, because like, for the long-term projects, one in three, that's like five hundred and something thousand dollars almost, almost.
Which you mentioned that a well is about that amount?
Well, a well costs, this, this well costs about five hundred thousand total, or a little more?
Five fifty.
Yeah.
But we won't get that again.
We won't get that in.
We won't get that in?
We won't get that price as cheap.
No, yeah, it was, yes, I'm sorry.
But we need, so we, well, I think, is we just put in a well, we, we're, because I'm making updated announcements, but I guess we need more water source.
We need a tower, we need a tower, maybe, next year. But, um, and then we have the utility property, we've got some money saved. And we really need to get our thinking hats on and put this money to work.
For the city.
So that's why we'd like for us to consider looking at our calendars so that everybody's on the same page about what we, when we can meet in, uh, the summer. So, we normally meet for, like, around the first of July to begin with, and then we do another one later once we get the best, the definite tax monies and all that, yes?
Yes.
That depends on people's schedule.
I know, and that's why, that's why I'm wanting to get, kind of, everybody thinking about their schedules for the summer.
I'm big thinking, I don't want to be really out of town right now, it's like the first two weeks of September.
Okay, so you'll be around in the summer?
Yeah, well, I can't, well, I, I have a set date yet, so, I, I, I'll, I'll need to run out to California a few more times, but if you get your dates in soon enough, then I can plan around that.
Right. So, let's look at July. Fourth is a weekday, so that's bad. What about like, uh, the second week of July somewhere?
You're gonna, that's a big issue.
Okay, okay, good to know. What about the next one? Well, that's, city council's on the fifteenth. What about the first or second of July? No?
What day is the fourth?
The fourth is a Thursday, so the first is a Monday, the second is a Tuesday. Mondays seem to work best for y'all, don't they? I'm sorry, and not necessarily, or, and, you like hundreds, okay, so how about-
Summer's free up immensely for us, like, as far as schedules, so.
Okay, so how about July first for our first one?
Sure.
Okay?
And what time?
Uh, tracking, you know, with-
I guess the, yeah, I guess the EDC meeting is at seven, right?
Oh.
Well, if we start before, then they can all look at it.
Could we do it Tuesday, it's good? Tuesday, the second? Is that okay? Let's do it the second. At six, or like thirty, six o'clock? Y'all be here for that early?
Six, yeah, we'll be here at six.
Okay, let's do six. And then the next one, when, when do we normally get our stuff? Like, the end of August?
Yeah, um, we certify, well, they won't certify, you don't get the tax information till usually the end of August. Where you get to have to set the tax rate, so. Well, depending on what happens on the first one, um, then-
We might not have to.
Well, we'll, well- Another one twice.
At the end, then. We can set that one after it happens.
Sometime, okay, in August, something to work out on, maybe on the side.
We're doing a project. Might pencil in one more.
I think we should, because-
And then we can cancel it?
Yeah. I think that's a good idea, because we're talking about, you're trying to-
Yeah, like, the August one might not be necessary, depending on what happens in July.
Okay, so let's set the August one anyway, okay?
August twelfth to thirteenth.
How about August twelfth? That's a Monday, second Monday. Okay?
Six P M. also.
Yeah. And, I mean, this is not in stone, it's just so that we kind of, everybody's thinking about it.
I'll just try to try avoid those things.
Yes, please, yeah.
We are gonna be out of, working back into town that day, we have a state.
Okay, so you should be back in plenty of time? Yeah, but you're gonna be tired, traveling, how about we do it that Tuesday? Thirteen?
Maybe on Tuesday.
Both of them, yeah.
Both of them.
Both of them.
That's good, yeah, it's, that's, all right, this is, then you're not gonna wear the one.
And then we might not need one, is it?
Yeah, that's right.
What time are we gonna do in August?
Six. I'll do my best to have, um, information about emergency building, and bringing, you know, costs, and, uh, we talked about, um, putting a green space down back here, so that would be, you know, that would be the things we need eventually. Okay? Remodeling here at City Hall.
Well, we have twelve thousand dollars for the City Hall, I mean, that's the airport, that parking lot, that parking lot. We set sites in the garage, you know, that, it's under the park here. So we have something to do.
Park. City Hall, okay, twelve thousand to City Hall.
Park, we do two ninety-five, private streets, or, I'm asking, I don't know, do that.
Yeah. But that's the other thing, what do y'all wanna do about, do you think we need a bigger chamber? Do you think we should have a second chamber?
I don't wanna use it yet. I don't wanna use it.
Yes?
I'd like to address the, the revamping city hall because, as we know, that's kind of an issue we have. Last, the end of last month, we had fifty-eight people signed up for pre-trial. And I came in the night before and set up the chairs to have as, not quite fifty-eight, we didn't even have enough chairs. And there was still really not enough room. But still, there was movement of the chairs before I came in and things were changed around.
Because they need to have, I mean, that's, it was not done to be confrontational. It was done because they've got to have, we're still doing business here.
Right, and, and I tried to give that accommodation. The prosecutor is sitting where you were sitting and we had the screen there to try to accommodate the new rules on privacy. And the prosecutor asked specifically if we could have a bailiff because he felt very uncomfortable. There were two litigants that were really saucy that day and they were very borderline threatening him. And usually the chief is here, but on that day, he wasn't. And so he was asking also to accommodate her privacy if we could use the kitchen next time for the prosecutor to allow one defendant at a time to go in there to allow for more privacy. I mean, the door can be opened and the bailiff can be outside the door. But if we arrange the kitchen table at a certain angle and put him with his back to the window and then just call people one at a time, I think that would help with the flow and would help with the overflow here because then we can put more people. We have one section here, one section here, and then them in there. So we can more efficiently use the space. But as you talked about redesigning, I'm hoping that you'll include the court in that and then also go by the new guidelines for confidentiality.
Okay, so a bailiff, that's another expense.
It doesn't have to be an expense because if he'll just schedule someone, it could be an expense, but Sergeant...
It's not an expense.
Sergeant James is usually here.
We can get him here for four hours. I mean, it's not an expense, we're not gonna have to pay or anything like that.
But would that be part of your court building security fund also?
It could, if, if it's going to be an expense, it could come out of that fund if we needed to.
Okay, so how long does the prosecutor usually stay?
Nine until noon.
So it's three hours that the kitchen would be occupied? Does that mean?
It would interfere with the operation of the rest of the offices here.
With the rest of the operations?
Yeah. It would lead to conflict for the rest of the employees.
Okay.
And as we're thinking about what we're gonna do in the back there, maybe we should move the kitchen to the back.
That's the other option, is if the vehicles wanted to move out of the garage and, I don't know if it's air-conditioned, can we get it something back there?
They're in America, basically.
No.
But we had talked about needing some, some others, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's, we're gonna have to...
We can get it in a workshop, we talked about it.
When is your next court? When is your next pre-trial?
May twenty-third.